Everyone, thank you for coming. It is 7:00 PM and I call the January 13th, 2025 School Board Meeting to order. The Holman Board of Education and the School Director Holman acknowledge that our schools are located on the ancestral homelands of the Ho-Chunk, Sauk, and Fox in Dakota peoples. We celebrate and honor these lands and their sacred significance to indigenous peoples. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board Clerk Maggie Smith, would you please call the roll?
Jennifer Deek.
Here.
Kadija Islam.
Here.
Chris Lau.
Here.
Lindsay Need.
Here.
Maggie Smith, here. Bridget Todd Robbins.
Here.
Barb Wench.
Here.
Kieven Zilke.
Here.
All right, with seven of the seven board members present, I declare a quorum. I note that the agenda has been posted, distributed, and sent to the local media. With this in mind, are there any changes to this agenda? I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published.
So moved.
Chris has moved.
Second.
Kadija has seconded to approve the agenda as published. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as published, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve the published agenda has passed. And we do not have any public participation this evening. So moving on to recognition and thank yous, Dr. Miller.
Yeah, this evening, we have been very fortunate. We have multiple donations that I want to recognize this evening. First, rundy metal. As you heard, the Holman Middle School had a food drive and rundy metal would let them come over and they would weigh like how much food was in the trucks and so on so that because the different classes had a competition. And it was just really fun to, and they were able to say they raised 2,680 total pounds of food for our Holman area, which is outstanding. The La Crosse Area Community Foundation gave a donation to our food pantry at the middle school for $1,500. And then DBS Group is giving a donation of $500 to every, each elementary school for a food drive that our elementary schools did. Bernie Buckner Mechanical donated snow pants, books, board games in December, which went to many of our families. And then they call themselves the League of Ridiculous and they support our Project Live and our Adaptive Sports League and they donated $7,560 to those programs. And then we had the Sarah Mullenbeck Foundation, this is C.C. and Dan Mullenbeck. And they donated $10,000 to our district and it was for things such as robotics equipment, band instruments, Quiz Bowl, and our Monk Student Organization to bring in a speaker. So just outstanding collaboration from our community to really help us and make things happen for our students that we are so thankful for. And then this evening, I just am very excited. The reason I'm sitting over here is each year, the Wisconsin Association of School Boards recognizes members of our school district, which are our board members, which is you, for your commitment to professional development. And it's your commitment to learning about how to really be a good board member. And this year, I am excited to recognize the majority of our board members. And this recognition goes in levels. So the first level is a Level One, which means you have received 75 points. And points are based on if you attend workshops, you go to conferences. So it's all these, all this extra commitment that our board members do outside of, you know, having a full-time job, coming here for all these nightly meetings. None of that is part of it. This is above and beyond. So we are so thankful for all of this. But if I could have these board members come forward to please receive their Level One recognition, Barb Wench, Bridget Todd Robbins, Maggie Smith, and Lindsay Need.
There we go. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you. Maggie, thank you so much. Stay here. Do you want us to get a picture of all of you or would you like some?
If you come over to here, it'd be good. Do you have certificates on the inside?
Like a folder? I want to be right.
Dr. Miller.
No, I don't.
All right, one, two, three. Thanks.
Now, don't go too far. Just kind of stand over on the side.
And then, next, I would like to recognize two board members that have reached Level Two, which is actually double the point amount each, which means they have probably, possibly been a board member a little longer too and have continued their professional development. That's Jennifer Deek and Chris Lau. So congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations. And we'll get a picture of you two and then we'll get a picture of us together. I've got my big boots on.
Perfect. Donny calls Dylan.
My guess is you're close, but you just traveled the world. No, it's fine.
Perfect. Thank you. Congrats.
So, thank you very much for all your commitment.
All right, moving on to reports and discussion. Item 8.1, Executive Director of Finance and Operations Julie Holman will be joined virtually by Eric Cass of PMA to present the 2022 Referendum Financing Plan Discussion Update. This item will appear on the January 27th Consent Agenda. And, yep, go on. And then he can.
Oh, there he is.
She'll be ready to go.
All right. Hi, Eric. Are we still working?
Yes.
All right.
Can you make it bigger?
Yes. I will allow you to introduce yourself while I pull up the presentation here this evening.
Oh.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the flexibility to present virtually this evening. My name is Eric Cass, for those I have not met, and some of my other travels to the Holman School District. I'm the Director of Public Finance and have been working with Julie and the team to help structure the debt as it relates to the capital referendum for 74.75 million that was approved about a year and a half ago, if my memory serves correct. So a couple of things we want to run through here is really close to the next slide. We're going to talk through a little bit about, and we'll have a sec, with some of the debt that was already issued in relation to the November 2022 referendum. Talk a little bit about some of the underlying strategies that we communicate with the district and some of the priorities that we're trying to accomplish with the last issuance here. And then we will wrap it up with kind of an outlay of the structure or what we call the amortization repayment schedule for the remaining 24.75. And really how that interacts with our property tax levying projections, which I know are always very important when we think about the local impact for that capital referendum. So getting right into it, what we're looking at here is just a quick summary, and I'll show you more detail here later in the presentation, in relation to two actions that were taken. These were both back in January of 2023. At that point in time, we had recommended and the board approved two separate issuances. The first one was a $15 million taxable issue. And that word taxable is important because the school district actually has the ability to issue debt on a tax exempt basis. But what we did back in early 2023, just as a reminder, is we decided to issue that on a taxable basis, amortize it very quickly over six years versus the normal 20 years. And the reason why we did that is that the proceeds or the money that came in was not going to be subject to arbitrage, meaning that the district could really leverage those funds and use them as the last dollar spent on the project to gain as much interest earnings on the proceeds to help hedge against construction inflation and a lot of flexibility for Julie and the team as they are pulling through the project and needing to react to things that may change. The second issuance was a fairly straightforward $35 million tax exempt issue, and that was amortized over 20 years, which is the maximum lawful amortization under Wisconsin state law. You can see the taxable at a 2.45% interest rate and tax exempt issue is 3.68. The reason why there's a difference there, of course, is when we issue debt on a shorter amortization on the taxable cycle of six years, you're always going to get a lower interest rate than if you amortize it over a longer period of time. And that 35 million, just to put it all in, was used for the initial cash flow needs of the project. So it was the first money spent out of that first 50 million issued. So here we are today. Some of the key considerations that we look at that I alluded to at the beginning is, number one, we're always talking about the interest rate environment. We want to avoid putting the district in the market when we're seeing rising interest rates. And I'm going to show a little bit of history with that and also what that's looked like over the last, about 13 months. Another key consideration and one of the major drivers for this conversation on the remaining 24.75 is the cash flow needs of the project. So we do know that the district is getting pretty close in terms of its cash flow needs, and that is probably one of the major priorities of working with, again, Julie, to help structure the timing of that last issuance of 24.75. Normally, we want to look at maximizing the interest earnings, but as we get to the third out of three issues, there's not a lot of interest earnings, but of course, there will be some. So arbitrage will be a key consideration as it relates to kind of the final spend down with this third bar. Another key point that I'll show in a couple of slides is the property tax levying commitments and future planning. So we are doing some unique things with this issuance to help support its near-term reduction to the tax levy as it relates to the repayment of debt as an underlying strategy to help smooth out the potential operation referendum that is being discussed with the school district. And then, of course, we're always talking about amortization of debt and putting in some flexibility for early payment on debt if future school boards would have the appetite and the ability to do so. And I'll talk about what that's going to look like when we get into the full plan year. This is a little bit of a busy chart. I don't love it, but it is the kind of one data point that is related to the municipal market. And so this looks at the 20-year history of a AAA-rated credit. So the school district Holman is AA2, which is two levels below AAA, but this is the only data that is produced in the market for municipal debt. That blue line is the current level of interest as of January 6, 2025, when we pulled the data to put this presentation together. But really what you can see is there's certainly a lot of volatility over the last 20 years, high points and low points. You notice the most recent low point in 2020 through 22, really driven by COVID and the pandemic, where we saw historical lows. Coming out of the pandemic as things opened up, the Federal Reserve turned to increase interest rates to fight inflation, and that's why we saw in 2022, early 2022, some pretty steep inclines as it relates to the interest rate environment. But more recently, you see that on the next slide. It's certainly settled in to kind of the current rates that we're at. So now, a lot less volatility right now than we've really seen over the last 12 to 18 months. This makes it a little bit more clear in terms of really how we track the market and look. So this is going back to January 2nd, 2024, the first day that markets were open in the new year of '24. Top line is for a 20-year issue, that greenish line that's kind of in the middle is the 10-year, and then the bottom darker blue is a 5-year maturity. So we're really going to focus in on the top line as we look at the last issuance of 24.75 and recommend an amortization of 20 years. So what I've noticed as you get to the far right is some increases. It almost looks like Batman's head a little bit, I think, in November of '24. And then you saw some declines as we got towards the end of the year, but it's fairly normal for the municipal market. We see an uptick in late December just because there's a lot of volume moving in the market. Even putting it into perspective here in Wisconsin, the last November of 2024 referendum cycle saw $2.8 billion of capital debt approved across the state. And so there's a lot of volume just here in Wisconsin. And so this is tracking the entire country. So when there's a lot of volume, you normally see a little bit of an uptick, but then you can see it flatten out more recently in early January and settling. So again, this is the final Phase 3 voting we've recommended. The plan would be to have a competitive sale the morning of January 27 and have the board consider final adoption of a resolution to approve the interest rates and final structure for the securitization of the 24.75. Currently, our projected interest rate is 4.05%, which is what we call an all-inclusive rate. It would be the interest rate paid to investors as well as all of the costs for our fees, bond council fees, rating, you can see, all-inclusive in that rate. It would be used for the final cash flow needs of the project as we near kind of the end line of the projects approved in November 2022. And again, as I said earlier, structured to provide some near-term tax relief as it relates to the required levy for repayment of principal and interest for new debt service, which includes a little bit of debt that was in place prior to 2022, but the majority would be from the capital referendum in November of 2022. So here's kind of a fairly busy chart, but it breaks out existing debt as well as the full 74.75 million. On the far left, that is existing debt that was in place prior to November of 2022. And then in the box is all of the debt issuance is totaling 74.75 million. As I talked about on one of the first slides, the 15 million was put into place and you can see that that wasn't paid off early and will be retired in 28, 29. So a very short amortization. And again, we did that taxable, and that was the purpose behind that. And then the 35 million was amortized over 20 years and kind of filled in as we paid off the 15 million, starting to rack up repayments of that. And then the structure on the 24.75, again, is recommended for a full 20 years as it relates to repayment. Kind of bringing it full circle, what you'll see over on the far right under the Fund 39 Total Levy column is that we do know that the Fund 39 levy for 24, 25, the current school year, was at $8,134,160. And we believe that this recommendation and structure will be able to drop that required levy down by a little over 1.3 million to provide some offset to the potential operation referendum here in April of '25. You'll see that's moved out until 28, 29, and then a secondary drop occurs from 6.8 to 5.3 to provide flexibility to future boards as it relates to the required levy associated with Fund 39. That could be operational referendum capital or the levy could just simply drop at that point in time. But that is certainly something that Julie and I talked a lot about, continuing to maintain that flexibility for future administration of school board. Final piece I wanted to highlight, and we will finalize these numbers for the school board transparently coming into the 27th with that resolution, is we like to compare what our estimates were and what was promised to the community as it relates to the overall expense for the project. And prior to the November referendum, our tax levy projections and finance and plan assumed that third column there, the pre-referendum interest projection, a little over $43.4 million in total interest. We believe that with the structure and with the final recommendation for the 24.75, that it will be about a $10.7 million reduction in total interest expense, which really translates to less taxes necessary to repay the debt, which is, I feel, good news in terms of where we thought we were going to be with the interest rate environment pre-referendum and where some of the strategic execution on the multiple issuance as we'll come forward. But again, that asterisk there is important because we'll finalize that number and report out the final results of the pre-referendum to the final plan, once we lock in interest rates on the 27th prior to approval. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Any questions? No questions.
All right. So in two weeks, the sale will occur and we'll bring that all back to you for approval that evening. Thank you, Eric.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you.
Safe travels. Bye.
All right, moving on to item 8.2. Holman High School Activities Director Jason Luloff will now present the co-curricular renewal agreements for Boys and Girls Hockey. These items will appear on the January 27th Consent Agenda.
Hello, I'm here to present Boys and Girls Hockey Co-op Renewals. The Boys Hockey would typically be due at this time and Girls Hockey would have been due next year. However, Girls Hockey is looking to add an additional team to the co-op, which means then we have to redo the paperwork. So I am bringing them to you together, even though they're different times. So the Boys Co-op, starting there, this is the one that would be typically due at this point. Nothing changing with the co-op. Aquinas, Cockburn, Fulton City, G E T, Holman, Luther, Co-op, and the Avalanche. And as I said, nothing changing. The Aquinas would be the co-op head. And like all of our co-ops, we split them on a per-participant basis, paying everything to the lead co-op person. Any questions with the Boys Co-op Renewal?
No questions.
Okay. And then the Girls Co-op Renewal. The co-op, I brought this to you last year, and the co-op switched over to West Salem. However, Luther now has one interested player and they are currently not on our WIA paperwork, which is why I'm bringing them to you. So this team would be West Salem, Aquinas, Bangor, G E T, Holman, La Crosse Central, La Crosse Logan, Onalaska, and now Onalaska Luther. So that's the difference with that one and why this one is being brought, brought here now. This team has many, many teams and kind of a conglomerate of contributors, whereas the Holman Boys team has mostly Holman and then very few from all of the other teams. But any questions on the Cyclones Co-op?
No questions.
Is it three-year in all?
All renewals are two years. So now, I think last time I brought swimming together, Boys and Girls, and now hockey together, Boys and Girls. So you'll be seeing a little less of me literally every two years, as long as nothing changes.
About how many people do we have on each team from Holman?
The Boys is somewhere around like 27 and the Girls is somewhere around nine or 10. We're a heavy contributor in both. The Boys, the co-op is, there wouldn't be other teams that would be able to function without us, and the Girls wouldn't have any teams that would be able to function solo. So just kind of a unique, unique situation for co-op needs with our region and Boys and Girls Hockey. And then ICE is not available in many communities, so it's another barrier. All right.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, moving on to item 8.3. Executive Director of Student Services Jill Mason will present on the number of spaces available for open enrollment requests. This item will appear on the January 27th Consent Agenda.
Okay, so every January, I come to you and talk to you about our open enrollment slots for next year. These are hard to predict sometimes in January, but we do this every year. So the first part of this is just really looking at our 4K through 12 spots and really more focused on that elementary level. We use a couple of different things. So we use the reported enrollment from our Third Friday count in September. We have the, the class size guidelines that we've used for several years. And then we use kind of our previous sections and then we calculate how many anticipated sections we would need in the future. There's a couple of things to remember with this, though. While it looks like we would be reducing several sections, we also do have to remember that when we get here in the spring, we're, we're also looking at the boundary study where we're moving kids from one school to the other. Those are not, those numbers are in here, but not the actual school-to-school thing. So we'll have a lot of conversation about that, about district boundary waivers. All of those things will be put into place before we look at potential open enrollments for coming in. So we keep those numbers open at the elementary level because we are declining slightly in enrollment, so we don't want to say no to people. But when they open enroll, at least at the elementary, they open enroll to our elementary schools. And then we take a look at what we have available from seats. And so, for instance, we might be full at Prairie View 3rd Grade, so we would say, yes, you can come into Holman, but we can't place you at Prairie View. We can place you at Evergreen because they have more space. So that's how we would do the elementary pieces of that. Middle school and high school are pretty open from the lens of accepting anyone there because we don't have those specific building level classes. So then the next part, so basically, to close up the regular ad-open enrollment, we are open in all of the sections. Again, but at the elementary level, we would determine where we place the kiddos based on the, the grade level enrollment per school. And we have a little team that does that. Melissa helps us, Joanie helps us. We monitor those numbers all year round, but now through, through May and June and all through the summer, we'll be monitoring it pretty closely. So the next part is our special education numbers. And so the first one here that I calculated is our Speech and Language Services. It's really kind of small, but as you look, we have each school separated and then at the bottom, the total. And so we use a really old caseload number from DPI, but that's what all the school districts around here use because we don't have anything better at this point. And so really, it's saying that total, we look at the total number of students. So total number, we'd really be looking around that 220, and we currently have 351 students who require speech and language. So we would be capping Speech and Language Services again this year because we currently are over our staffing ratio. OT and PT, so again, currently, we only have one OT in our school district and we have three certified OT assistants. This, these numbers are based on two because we're hoping to hire another, our, another OT back. And so currently, we have over the amount that we could have even with other quotas involved. And then same with PT. We have a .75 P, or we have a 1.0 PT we share with Onalaska. And between our numbers and Onalaska numbers, we are over the recommended amount, so we would be capping those two services as well. And then lastly, we have all of our building levels cross-cat numbers. Again, these numbers are the numbers that are currently in the buildings for next year. This does not take into consideration, you know, some of our movement to different buildings where we might have to move staff, things like that. So we're looking at Viking is going to be pretty full next year, so we'll be talking more about that. And then our numbers at Evergreen and Sand Lake, we have four spaces and three spaces, so we would be limited a little bit there. And then Project Live, currently, we have one, but again, that's dependent on if other school districts choose 6603 with us, so we may have more spaces. We're not sure. And then Early Childhood, we have open spaces right now. A lot of our current high numbers of kids are going into kindergarten next year, which is why our numbers are increasing at Viking. So that was a, a lot. The other thing I want to say is, we would also, to summarize, we would be capping Speech and Language Service open enrollments with IEPs who have speech and language, occupational therapy, physical therapy. We have some limited spaces in just general cross-categorical within the buildings. Viking is limit, is zero. And then we also cap, so any student who has an IEP that says they need one-on-one, like educational assistance services, we would be denying those because we would have to hire. And right now, if you look on Weekend, we have several positions posted and we still are struggling to find people. And then the last thing that we typically cap is students that have a disability-related need for legging skills and self-regulation. So kids who need like crisis response quite a bit in their IEP where we would have to use seclusion and restraint. We really, really are trying to limit our numbers with that. We've already worked with DPI on students already in our schools, so we, we are capping our numbers. We just don't have the capacity to take on that population right now. Questions on all of that?
Any questions?
I just had one quick question because I, I see like some of our district guidelines around class size, and then I noticed that projected class size is a little bit higher for some of those elementary grades. for some of those elementary grades, but we still have open enrollment for those grades. Like, kind of typically, how far above would we agree to go above those guidelines?
Yeah, typically, we don't even go above those guidelines. So what you're seeing with the projected class size is just what it's projected, and, and we, we tend to stay below, but when you're looking across the whole district, we keep it at that number. But if you're looking at, again, third grade at Evergreen, we're gonna, you know, really cap it at that, but that means those kids might go to a different school. So we really try not to go over. There are times when we might have to go over one or two as we get going in the school year. Or some of our grade levels have to go over by one because we're not going to hire a whole teacher for one, nor are we going to move that one somewhere else. But that's a really good question.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to item eight point four. Executive Director of Instructional Services Kim Edwards will now provide the annual educational options notice reminder. This item will also appear on the January twenty-seventh consent agenda.
Good evening. Well, it's time, it's that time again, year again, where we do our, our notification of the educational options and then also our accountability report. This is required by statute and is also going to be published in the Tribune, coming up at the eighteenth here. So the first section is just all of the options that are available to residents of the school district of Holman. This is, this aligns with our, our district policy as well, so you can find it there in addition to that. But first, of course, we have our regular school district of Holman programming there with our website. We have a number of programs as well that you will have had reports from. Many of these under, with Lindsay Sipe from the high school, the first several, our early college credit programs, Start College Now, our A P courses, dual and transcribed credit. We've had reports on those already this year. In addition, we also have our tutorial programs, independent study courses, some online options, work-study, our summer school, of course, which we have reports on those as well, youth apprenticeship, our full-time, part-time, open enrollment options, as well as information about homeschooling as well. The second part of this report is our accountability report. We had a much more in-depth report on this earlier, but this is just notification of the scores and accountability areas, or rather rankings, that we got in terms of our district and school report cards. Again, it's an annual required notice that will be posted in the Tribune as well as here. Any questions on this?
Any questions?
Okay, I have one, and I probably have asked you this before, so I apologize. What do we offer students who might be credit deficient, like by their junior, senior year?
Sure. So we work really closely with student services, and our team at the high school really does a lot in terms of options. So we have access to things like Play-Doh online. We've done a lot of credit recovery pieces in the summer as well, and we work really hard to fill in those gaps, student by student, based on what those needs are and what works for them.
Thank you.
Anything else?
All right, any other questions?
Okay.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item eight point five. Director of Human Resources Melissa Kates will present the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school year calendar. This item will appear on the January twenty-seventh consent agenda.
Good evening. All right, it's the much anticipated school calendar. All right, so to start us off, just want to share a little bit of background in how we got here tonight. So looking at our committee membership, this year, as we looked at developing the calendar for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six, we had a group of administrators that included myself, Dr. Mueller, Lacy Sin, Nick Baki from the high school, Nina Swanson from Viking, and Crystal Mott was our committee. We've met four times since September. Our initial meeting, we took some time to review the current calendar and the prior survey that we had done, and I'll go into a little bit more of that as we get going here. Subsequent meetings, we came back with draft versions of the calendar. We reviewed and made some adjustments. In our November meeting, we developed some drafts that we sent out to educators to get their feedback on the calendar, and in December, came back and reviewed all of their feedback and brought, or developed what we are bringing forward tonight. So as we looked at different things and that we took into consideration when we developed these calendars, first off, the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four stakeholder surveys. So we don't want to survey people to death, so we had recently, I would say recently, for the twenty-three, twenty-four calendar, did a survey to our parents and staff. And so we went back and reviewed some of that data, looked at the preferences for calendars that they had, and just trying to figure out how we could incorporate some of those things into this calendar. Lots of conversation at our committee meetings about early release and feedback from that survey, specifically from parents about the elimination of early release days. So looking at some of our district priorities related to staff development, we did have, again, a lot of conversation at our meetings with, just talking about the feedback that we received, or as principals and instructional services had received from our staff during and after our welcome back, our opening day that we had with staff, and some of that staff development with our educators. We did have a lot of P D at the beginning of the year this year, much due to Act Twenty and throughout this year. Looking at this upcoming year, the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar, we really don't anticipate the need for that extensive amount of P D during the school year. So took that into consideration as we developed the calendar and had conversation about early release as well. Let's see, we also had some conversation and got feedback from staff about how we could continue to do that work. So what are we doing during early release? And if we eliminate it, how does that look differently? How can we still get that work done, but in a different way? Talking about the staff feedback from the calendars, we did share, we created a presentation, gave that to our principals. They shared it at a staff meeting with our educators. That included three draft versions of calendars for the teachers to review. We gave them a survey to fill out, asking for their likes and dislikes on each of the specific calendars, and then asked them at the end to rank their preference of calendars from most to least liked. And then put all of that into a final draft that you'll see here in a little bit. So we did have a hundred and seventy-six teachers fill out our survey. Of those, ninety-seven ranked the draft, the first draft calendar that we offered them as an option as their top choice. So we reviewed all of their feedback from draft one, taking their likes and dislikes, and then worked to incorporate that into our final draft. So taking what they liked the most and then adjusting it based on that feedback. So that was a lot to start. Here's some general information on what we created with that twenty-five, twenty-six calendar. So looking at our first day of school, Tuesday, September twenty, or September second, that is the first day after Labor Day. It's not an early start on the calendar because we really want to maximize the amount of construction time that our crews can have in our buildings to wrap up and finish what they need to before everyone's back in the building. So going back to a normal start date of the first day after Labor Day. Last day of school then pushes us out to that first Friday in June, June fifth. And then we've got some no-school days that you'll see in there. They're pretty evenly spread out throughout the year. There's a one, maybe two every month. So as we look at different holidays and different break times, you'll see some extended offerings as well for breaks. This calendar does accommodate two built-in inclement weather days, so we do have those built in as well. And it does meet all the D P R minute requirements for all of our students. We did look at a calendar option for a week-long spring break because we know that was part of our feedback on one of our surveys from before. If we put in a week-long spring break, it really pushed us out into June and eliminated a lot of the breaks throughout the year. So instead of having school so late into June, we went with this option, as said. Hopefully, in the future, we can get back to looking at offering an option for a spring break. So some of the changes that you'll see on the calendar, that's in your packet. So the changes that we do share on this slide are, a lot of them are based on, again, that feedback from the twenty-three, twenty-four calendar and how we were able to incorporate that. A lot of that feedback talked about parent-teacher conferences and how do we look at offering it during the daytime? So really trying to accommodate parents who work a day shift and parents who work an evening shift, so it might be easier for them, those that work in the evenings, to come in during the daytime. So we did, we were able to align conferences. So on the calendar, you will see that all of our buildings have their parent-teacher conferences two times per year on the same dates. The first week, it'll be held on a Tuesday evening. The times are a little bit different for high school and middle school versus our elementaries, just because of when their days end, their school days end. And then on the following week, so trying to accommodate, again, people who might be gone one week, if they can come in the next week, you'll see it on a Thursday. And then on that day, there's an early release for our students, and then parent-teacher conferences will start right after, or shortly after, the students are released from school. So high school and middle school would be one P M. to seven P M., and elementaries would be two P M. to eight P M. On both those spring and fall parent-teacher conference sessions, the Friday after that Thursday conferences is a non-school day for our students. One of them, I believe, is a non-school day for staff as well, and one of them then is a professional development day. So, um, so the other thing we, I shared a little bit earlier was the elimination of E R days, so not completely eliminating them because I just said we'll have early release during those parent-teacher conferences, but drastically reducing the amount of early release days. You'll only see three of them on the calendar. Two are related to parent-teacher conferences, and then the last one is on the last day of school. Again, we are working with our principals to make sure we can have our teachers getting that important work done that they were previously doing during that early release time, whether that's data meetings that they're having or their team meetings. So we'll be working on a plan to make sure that gets done as well. One other area that we're going to address related to this reduction in E R days is the impact it does have on our outreach events within our early childhood program. So currently, our E R days are utilized for public preschool outreach events. So there's no four K on early release days. Instead, they do public outreach events. So like they've gone to the children's museum, they have something, one month, they had yoga at Paul and Payne Yoga Studio. But within the new calendar, the four K program will, early childhood will have that opportunity to schedule and continue those events for that program. So we won't be losing that from that program. This is kind of small, but you do, you should have another full-size calendar. This is the student calendar. Once we receive board consent on the student calendar, then we'll move forward with creating all of our staff calendars. So as you know, our staff, like our teachers have different holidays than our E As than some of our year-round staff, so we do have different calendars for all of our different staff groups. So those will be developed once we have board approval on the student calendar. And then we will send those out to staff as well. Questions?
Any questions?
This might be a little, a little nitty-gritty for the subject. I love the, lots of things about the proposed calendar, but with parent-teacher conferences being the same days, has there been any discussion about using the same sign-up system for parents who have kids in multiple buildings?
I don't know. We'll definitely bring that back for feedback, though.
I've seen some where like it, you can link your kids.
Okay.
So that you can coordinate your times instead of trying to pull up one and...
That would be helpful, yes. I understand that as a parent of multiple children as well.
Yes.
Good feedback.
And also, I'll just say, the early release day is being reduced, I think, is, is a big win. That was like the top thing I heard from parents about schedules.
Yeah, I think parents, just of, parents of youngers trying to find childcare, and also for our students, it's a, it's a disruption to their norm of their school week. So I hope the change is good for our families. So, all right, any other questions?
I also love so many things about this, but, and I'm not suggesting this, I just want to preface this comment, but now that we have like one of the largest school districts in our county going to this like very early start date, has there been discussion about that? Do like our school districts tend to like work together around that issue?
So, right now, the law is you must start after September first. The D P I does have certain reasons that you can get exceptions for that, and one being construction, as to why we were able to start earlier this year. Our area school districts, the, another reason, if you can show the fiscal impact to your district, is if you have to transport private school students and it affects your scheduling and your financial situation, and are able to prove this to the D P I, that's another reason. And they're also, actually, right now, the D P I is working on other reasons that would be acceptable for exceptions. So once we get through our construction in this upcoming school year, that's something that we can definitely look into because we do find it's best to align within the region because so many of us share staffing across districts and have kids across districts, and it is, you know, advantageous for many reasons. So that'll be something down the road that we could very well look into.
Thank you.
Good question. All right, any other questions? Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to item eight point six. Director of Business Services Crystal Mott will now present the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five financial statements and management letter update for consent on January twenty-seventh.
Okay, good evening. Tonight, I will be presenting a recap of the audit report. So as a reminder, this information was previously shared with members of our board administration, district and community on September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four, and additionally, during the annual meeting on October twenty-eighth as part of the treasures report. The treasures report included information on receipts and expenditures, fund balance, budget and debt due. The original budget that was presented that same evening presented the actual revenues and expenditures for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, the still referenced unaudited revenues and expenditures for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, because the final board action on accepting that had not yet been taken, and then the original twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five budget. So this is the final step to take action to accept the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four audit. In the booklets you should have all received, this is from part of the final section of the audit report called the schedule of finding and question costs. Here, it was reported that our financial statements were issued unmodified with no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, and as a reminder, we strive to receive an unmodified opinion. Here, it was reported that our federal awards were issued as unmodified, and the same report was given for the state awards qualifying as a low-risk auditee. So lastly, the management discussion and analysis, or M D N A, is located at the beginning of the booklet, and I would recommend reviewing this in more detail. It's written by members of our business services administration, and it's in addition to the report that our auditor provides, and is meant to be a narrative for reading and comprehending the audit information in a more non-technical format. And that, M D N A, also reports information on our budget to actual variances, and that information is provided when our actual values vary by either more than one-half of percent of a line item budget or more than one-ten percent of a total budget. So that information is included. The twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four financial statements will be on the next board meeting consent agenda, and it is recommended for approval at that time. Any questions?
No questions.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background materials on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion, but any board member like to pull an item out of the consent agenda to be discussed and/or voted on separately. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided.
So moved. Motion by Maggie.
Second.
Second by Bridgette. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. All right, moving on to the board debrief. I will call upon board members and ask you to present any comments or community reports you have. Tonight, we'll start with Kadeja.
Yeah, I think the only thing that I have for the debrief today...
I think the only thing that I have for the debrief today is, you know, we get to sit up here at the board table and frequently get to celebrate with our community in the school district, all the amazing projects and things that we get to do. And this is the first time that I've sat at this board table and felt the need to grieve with the community for the passing of Allison Bulter, our speech and language pathologist at Sand Lake. I did not know her personally, but I have people in my circle who knew her personally. And I think that it's important that we highlight what a beautiful light that she was. And my deepest, deepest condolences go to her family at this time and to the entire Sand Lake family and the school district family as well. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Chris?
Very well said, I have nothing else.
Okay, Lindsay?
Thanks for bringing that up, Kadija. I second the condolences. Also want to just thank the presenters tonight and just love the thoughtfulness behind the school calendar and taking the time to actually ask opinions of everyone involved and not only doing that, but actually hearing them and taking their feedback and giving choices. I mean, that takes a lot of work to put all that together. You don't have to do that, but you do that because you care and you want to know what everybody thinks and come to something that's a good compromise for all the varying opinions that I'm sure you get. So I think it looks great and really excited and just appreciate all the work that went into that. Thank you.
Okay, Maggie?
I think Kadija said it very well. Allison's family and colleagues and students have been on my mind. And also, yes, thank you to the presenters. I thought we covered a lot of great stuff tonight.
Okay, Bridgette?
Yeah, I agree with everything that's been said. I wanted to give just also a little kudos to Project Live because I'm part of that league of ridiculous. And they gave, they have to give a pitch. Essentially, they're nominated and they have to give a little quick presentation, and then that determines the votes, and they did a really, really great job. So definitely kudos to them. And I just want to say I'm really excited, once again, for the opportunity to attend the state education convention next week with all of these amazing people. That's all I have.
Okay, Barb?
I would just like to give some recognition to some families and community members that I witnessed two weeks ago at the show choir competition that Holman hosted. That was amazing. I could not believe the amount of volunteer hours that go into making that successful and the amount of people there. There was no place to park in this whole, they were parked up into the admin office parking lot, too. I could not believe the people. So thank you for everything you do. That was, there's obvious dedication to those kids that are in that program. I mean, they were there. I mean, you had judges that were high school graduates. You had families that their students had graduated and they were still there volunteering, as well as alumni that had also graduated but were still there participating. So thank you.
Okay, Keven?
Okay, I'm going to talk about some stuff that's been happening for students at the school. And so DECA's just did their districts last Saturday, and they had many state qualifiers, which is always great. Our DECA is pretty good, pretty amazing. And then we also have tons of events going on, like show choir, powerlifting, basketball, wrestling, and then also a wrestler, Josie Collins, was nominated by News 8000 for play of the week, which is a pretty big deal. And then also, the choir had a competition last Friday, and they got fourth place. This is the first time that they have placed. This is not show choir, this is like our choir at the school, the audition one. And so they placed, they got fourth, which is pretty good. They haven't done that. And they also got the Best Sopranos Award, which is pretty good out of all these other schools in our districts. And then also want to say that finals is coming up and that Tuesday, which is tomorrow, is an H-day, which is 1, 3 and 7. Wednesday is a V-day, which is 2, 4, 8. And Thursday is 5th and 6th, and also it's a shorter day, so there's retakes, which leads into a four-day weekend, which is going to be amazing. It's also the end of semester, which will come back January 21st, new semester, new classes, great. And then also, our prom theme is a night in Paris.
Nice.
All right, thank you. First, I want to, I want to thank all who, for all the donations that Dr. Mueller mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, that's an incredible amount of folks contributing to our district, and just want to give a shout out to them. I, I've actually been consumed with show choir the last few weeks, and this is all new to me, so, because I have a sixth grader in show choir. But, and I just want to give a shout out to the director of the middle school, Elliot Rickard. He has done a phenomenal job over there. And I, you know, middle school, you never hear about middle school anything, but he just took grand champion on Friday night at UnAlaska. And if you, if you look at the caliber of the, of the routine that's put together, he's done an absolutely incredible job with them. So thank you to Elliot. And then I also want to, and this is more personal for me, I want to recognize the passing of Allison Bulter and the impact she's had on that Sand Lake community. My son is in speech with her, and she's absolutely amazing. She's a ray of sunshine everywhere she goes, and she loves those kids so, so much. And we are going to miss her so, so much. So just wanted to recognize that. Okay, sorry about that. Moving on to item 10.3. The candidate deadline for filing all documents needed to establish eligibility to appear on the April 1st, 2025 ballot expired on January 7th at 5:00 p.m. A drawing of ballot order was held at 3:30 p.m. on January 8th. The candidates in the order they will appear on the April 1st ballot are Kadija Islam and Barb Wench. Also, board members have been provided with the proposed resolutions that will be discussed at the 2025 Wasby Delegate Meeting that takes place at the State Education Convention. Please review the proposed resolutions and provide Lindsay with any feedback you may have prior to the convention. And then moving on to our board meeting scheduler, our upcoming board meeting schedule. On January 15th, so just this Wednesday, we have a community session to talk about the refresh of our strategic plan. On January 22nd through 24th, we have the State Education Convention in Milwaukee. On January 27th, we have a finance committee meeting at 5:00 p.m., followed by a board meeting at 7:00 p.m. On February 5th, we have the wellness committee meeting at 3:45 p.m. And then on February 10th, we have the DEI committee meeting at 5:00 p.m., followed by a board meeting at 7:00 p.m. Is there any other business that needs to come before the board at this time? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Chris has moved?
Second.
Kadija has seconded to adjourn the meeting at 7:57 p.m. Motion carried. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.